Board of Appeals meeting to order. Could I have a roll call, please, Bea?
Mr. Lawrence Zinni?
Here.
Mr. Delaporte?
Yeah.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes, here.
Mr. Kamari?
Here. Okay, first order of business tonight is the acceptance of the minutes from April 27th, 2021. Everybody had a chance to review? All good? Any changes, revisions? No? Can I have a motion to accept the minutes as written?
I'll make a motion.
Second. Second from John, all in favor?
Aye.
So moved. All right.
Is it his car on his way?
He's on his way, okay. All right, we'll do the discussion. All right, second order of business tonight will be the adjourned public hearing. Appeal number 217721, Craig Bova, seeking an area variance section 24037 of District Regulations in an R40 zoning district where 25 feet to the side yard property line is required. The applicant can provide 12 feet for the construction of a 10 by 20 prefab shed, thus requesting a variance of 13 feet. The property is located at 5 Monfort Road and is identified as tax grid number 6358-01173528 in the town of Wappinger. Is Mr. Bova in the audience? You are. Would you mind stepping up, please?
Just have to open the adjourned public hearing.
Oh, that's right. Well, again, please, could I have a motion to open the adjourned public hearing, please?
I make a motion to open the public hearing.
Can I have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, so moved. So, Mr. Bova?
Hi.
All right, so we're back, right? We had to make a few adjustments to, we had some discrepancies on where the property line was or was the relationship to the shed.
Right. I have a marked line now.
Okay.
It's an actual string from one marker to the other.
Okay.
So that's visible.
So did you have a survey made?
Uh, no.
Did you have a survey? To who located the property line?
The surveyor.
The surveyor?
Yeah, the guy who put the stakes in the ground.
Okay. So he put the stakes in the ground?
Yeah, and I disconnected a line, so it's visible, because you guys...
So we can see where the property line is? But there's no survey showing the property line?
Well, yeah, there's surveys showing it.
We have, right, the survey we did have, if I remember correctly, we weren't quite sure that was where the property line was, right?
Yeah, no, it's clearly marked.
Okay, clearly marked now. All right, so I guess we would do then another site visit, right? All right, so why don't we schedule then another site visit for, can you guys go this Saturday?
Let's make it next Saturday, right? One Saturday before the meeting.
So, I'm sorry? We can either do this Saturday or the following?
Yeah.
I have to work this Saturday.
What's that?
I have to work this Saturday.
This Saturday?
Yeah.
All right, so will the following Saturday be better for you?
I'm sorry?
Will the following Saturday be better? All right.
Unless you come after 12:00.
Yeah, we're gonna be there probably about 9:00 in the morning. All right, so why don't we schedule that site visit then for that following Saturday, which would be...
May 15th?
No, the second one is the 22nd.
The 22nd?
22nd.
I won't be able to make that one, too. I'll have to come out separately.
Okay. All right, so John and Taliesin, let's see, Barbara, we'll schedule the site visit officially for the 22nd of May. And we'll be there around 9:00 o'clock in the morning?
Yep, okay.
We'll come, same thing, you know the routine. We'll come in, we'll see where the property line is, the shed and all that good stuff.
Okay.
Okay?
Yep.
And then why don't we schedule then a public hearing for that following ZBA meeting?
It will be an adjourned, you'll just be taking this adjourned public hearing and then setting it for a date certain, which is May 25th.
Okay. All right, let's do that then, David, we'll schedule that. So we'll do a site visit on the 22nd, and you'll be on the ZBA agenda for the 25th.
Okay.
We just need a motion.
Then I won't be there, so I'll come a different time, and I'll come on my own, so leave the mark...
Adjourned.
So leave the marking. So leave the marking. When we come, we may not all come together, so he may be coming late, so leave the marking for him.
Oh, okay, all right. So you're coming, you're just coming later.
Yes, different time.
Okay. Can you let me know when you're coming, just because I have dogs?
Yeah, absolutely. I have your number here, 8797.
Yep, that's it. So make a motion to adjourn us to May...
So, yeah, all right, so, right, so we need a motion then to adjourn the public hearing to May 22nd. I'm sorry, to May 25th. Can I have a motion, please?
Yeah, he made the motion already. I seconded.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
So moved.
So the 25th has to come back here, so...
So 25th is the meeting, 22nd site visit. Got it?
Yep.
Awesome. Thank you.
Thank you.
All righty, so we're gonna, we're gonna give Mr. Barr a couple more minutes to get here before we hear the public hearing.
Pete, do you want to do Mrs. Banano? Since she's not here, we can just make the changes, probably.
So we're actually adjourned this, right?
Yes.
To the 25th?
Right, she'll be published, but why don't you open it, and then we'll discuss what happened?
Okay. Okay, so we're gonna jump to, down the agenda a little bit, to a appeal number 217727. Christine Banano, seeking an area variance section 24037 of the District Regulations in an R40 slash, I'm sorry, R20 slash 40 zoning district, where 50 feet is required to the front property line. The applicant can provide 37 feet for the construction of a new front landing and steps, thus requesting a variance of 13 feet. The property is located at 27 Peters Road and is identified as tax grid number 6357-035076 in the town of Wappinger. Can I have a motion, please, to open the public hearing?
I'll make a motion to open the public hearing.
Can I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, so moved. Mr. Barr has arrived. Heidi, how you doing?
Sorry about that.
That's a... No worries. We're on the second page, David, it's Christine Banano appeal. All right, so we open the public hearing now. Do you understand, Barbara, that we're gonna be making some changes to this variance?
Right, so Mrs. Banano was out of town, so she couldn't be here tonight. So Bea will be republishing this for the 25th. But before it gets republished, we're gonna make some changes.
Okay.
So the property is approximately 37 feet from the house to the property line in the front, to the actual road. We take 12 feet off that the town owns, the first 12 feet. That leaves 25 feet left. Her original stoop, as it would call, didn't exceed farther out than her house. Her front door is set back in this house. So the new front porch exceeds a foot, so that's the first 12 inches. Her first porch had three steps. The new one has five, at 12 inches each. So that's an additional three feet. So subtracting that from the 25 feet she had for the first porch, she now only has 22 feet. So she'll need a 29-foot variance. So we're gonna change the public hearing to say that the applicant can provide 22 feet, requesting a 29-foot variance.
Got it.
And then this will have to go back out to her neighbors, especially that the variance is now being increased rather than decreased.
Got it. So then we would now then make a motion to adjourn?
To adjourn it to the 25th, because, is there anyone in the public for the variance that is on Peters Road? Okay, that's good, but it was published, so just in case somebody would have a comment...
Sure.
We'll adjourn it, and then it will be republished and recirculated.
Got it. All right then, then, can I have a motion, please, to adjourn this public hearing to the 25th of May?
Yeah, I make a motion to adjourn for the 25th.
Have a second? You have a second? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
So moved. All right, so let's jump back. To the first page, and let's go to a appeal number 217723. Richard Chico, did I say that correctly? Seeking an area variance section 240-30 of the District Regulations in an R20 zoning district. No accessory structure can be more than 600 square feet in size and not more than 20 feet in height. The applicant is proposing a garage of 1,250 square feet for the construction of a 25 by 50-foot detached garage, thus requesting a variance of 650 square feet. Where 75 feet to a county road is required, the applicant can provide 50 feet for the construction of a 25 by 50-foot detached garage, thus requesting a variance of 25 feet. The property is located at 86 Myers Corners Road and is identified as tax grid number 6258-03053052 in the town of Wappinger. Could I have a motion, please, to open the public hearing?
Motion.
Have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, so moved. All right, Richard, step up to the microphone. You're an experienced guy in this now. Okay, so for the benefit of the board and the public, just a quick, brief summary of what you need and why you need it.
Okay, so I was planning on my backyard, I'd like to put a detached garage. Originally, it was 28 by 50. The board had tried to said to me, listen, stay with them a little bit of the guidelines from the road to we made it 25 by 50. Detached garage, cosmetically, I might change the bay, but the original structure will not give you from 28 by 50.
Right, right. Okay, we were all out at the property a couple weeks ago. You know, we saw what you're doing, we got a pretty good feel of what your property is all about, you know, and your neighbors and the size of the garage, you know, we've been there, you've been here for, before. You know, we asked you to make some concessions, which you have.
Yes, sir.
And I, you know, as far as I'm concerned, I don't have any other questions for Richard. I don't know if you guys do. Maybe he basically did what we asked him to do the last time he was here, and I don't have any other question for him.
No, I just want to say I appreciate Mr. Chico. I appreciate, appreciate you working with us.
Of course, you guys are trying to help me out, so I just want to thank Bea, she was great help with this. I didn't know anything about this process, so I have to thank her, she kind of helped me through this.
Sure, sure. Joe, is anybody in the audience here to speak on behalf of this application? Why don't you then, you have to come up to the microphone, please, state your name and address?
Karen Skinner, we're next door neighbors with Rich. Our only concern is, is it gonna be a pole barn or is it gonna be a real garage that looks like part of the house?
I'm sorry, please say it one more time.
My name is Karen Skinner, we're next door neighbors.
Yes.
78 Myers Corners Road. Our only concern is, and we have no problem with how big the garage is, that's fine. We just were wondering, is it gonna match the house or is it gonna be like a commercial pole barn? That was our only concern.
Right, right, I'll speak, and Rich can verify. Rich is gonna be, you know, the garage itself is gonna be constructed very similar to the house.
That's perfect.
Same time, a color, trim, roof, et cetera.
Right, we see, we have neighbors in the past where they've built pole barns, and it just destroys the way the neighborhood looks. And then if we're gonna sell our house in a couple of years, we don't want to have to show a pole barn next door to our home, that's all.
Yeah, no, this is gonna be matching.
It's gonna be a real garage.
Yeah, it's gonna be, match the house.
With real roof and everything.
Do you want to show her a picture of it?
No, that's okay, I believe you, it's okay.
All right, Rich.
Again, I'm not trying to pull people aside, so what I was gonna do was, because the house I just got signed, I was gonna make it blue siding, we just got the roof black, so it would be all metal, like a steel building, and then the roof is gonna be black.
Can you come down?
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. Come on up, Rich.
I was just trying to address your concern.
Sure, it's fine.
So I was gonna try to make the house, my siding had just had from the house, it was blue with tan and a black, I was gonna do the exact same thing, only that it was gonna be a two or three big block, steel building, the black roof, and I was gonna match it down. So again, the concern was it was large and would stick out against Mr. Hannigan's property, it would look like crap, too.
Right, sure. But it's good, the question is, is it gonna match the house? Your answer is yes.
Yes.
It's a short story, and it will.
It's certainly a big metal building, it's not gonna look like it belongs like a gas station, that's what I was concerned about.
No, no, Mr. Hannigan, you wanna see, you wanna show her this? So again, it looks, it's still on the front, it's open big garage. If I may? So I just changed it five minutes ago, so it's gonna be one, so the car's gonna have switched the windows, and there won't be a door inside, there'll be three stairs here, black roof.
Which way are the doors facing?
Uh, you, so again, when we come down my driveway, when I come down my driveway, your house is on the right, we're gonna into garage, that way. So we're facing the garage doors.
When we walk out our door, we'll be looking through the doors.
Excuse me.
Why is it worrying, is it the garage doors face your house?
Excuse me, sir, just for the record, state your name and address, please.
I'm sorry.
That's okay.
I'm John Hannigan.
And?
We live together at 78.
Gotcha.
Why don't you have the doors face you, face Myers Corners Road, and then when you drive in, you can look, you can drive into your garage.
So originally, we had went, we wanted, when I came down, we broke Myers Corners, since I'm so close to Myers Corners, we come down, and originally, the garage was gonna go here and face top. I just didn't think, I wanted it closer to the house. So I moved it from here to so it would almost be like an L to the house. When you come down, the garage doors are gonna be in here. That's, that was a better situation.
So if your doors are open, we can see what's in your garage?
Which would be cars, but they won't be. Again, yes, so I guess what their concern is, the car is faced, so we're trying to clear that up, so stuff isn't on the warranty side.
I get that, we get that, we appreciate that.
Okay.
We're just thinking, the doors should be facing Myers Corners Road, that way you look out at your house, you look in the garage, we look at our house, we don't see your garage.
The only problem is this, so if we're looking at it this way, the way, Mr. Hannigan, if I understand this is correct, you want it to be here. There's no way, because the house, I'm trying to put it closer, sorry, up until my basement went door. So when I walk out the basement door, I want to pour a pad, walk down three steps, walk into the garage. That was the whole idea, to move a little closer.
Yeah, sure, and then...
I have one more question.
Yes.
Where is the gate going for the dogs? Is that gonna come closer to our house or is that gonna be on the other side of the building?
So that, so I'm trying to hold off till I put this in, till we found out. So that's now gonna come this way and go all around the back, then you have the exit for this.
So when I walk outside my two garage doors, am I gonna see the gate to the dogs or are they gonna be on the other side?
The gate's gonna go all the way around that property.
So how close is the gate coming over to our property with the dogs?
Would be the fence?
Fence.
Fence is well within, I didn't even move it, I'm gonna say that, you can move it anywhere you want. So I'm just kinda holding off on the fence till it's still building.
Yeah, sure.
So in the past, we've had a problem with my door being a pain in the ass for Mr. Hannigan. So they asked me nicely, and they have, if we could just kind of curtail this and end it. So I said, no problem.
Yeah.
Well, I got four or five fence estimates. Again, I'd love to, originally, we had the house this way, the building, now we moved it. So I told the fence guys, listen, just let me find out, if we're good to go, then we're good to go. Put the building up, fence goes this way around, sort of near the Pacasanders, go around the Pacasanders to the back, back of the property and come up this case. That's how we're gonna do it.
And that's allowed?
Yeah, we don't have to be with him.
Put the fence up for the dogs?
Negative, my understanding, negative, no.
There's no fences?
No, no permits.
In this town, you don't require a fence permit, the fence just has to be on your property.
Perfect, okay. Yeah, we were just concerned that the barn, excuse me, the garage was not gonna be a metal pole barn. In the past, we've just had, I don't know what you call that thing.
A carport.
A carport, with, that's okay, with tars.
Correct.
So I was just wondering if we're gonna go up to a real garage or we're just gonna do a pole barn? And then my biggest concern is the dogs. And that's to make sure that this is part of the dog plan, is to keep the dogs gated.
Yep, so this is gonna go up, and then we're gonna call the fence guys in, and then it comes right where this building is, it's gonna go this way, parking lot, I'm gonna make a new driveway, border the driveway and go right around this side, so it'll be like an L on this side.
So then, where you have your cars now on the side of the trees, they won't stay there anymore, that'll be, the trees will be able to grow again.
That's all gonna be lighted up. I'm gonna widen the driveway as we come down, because the driveway's like a carlet, I kind of widen it, move it closer to the house, and make the turn into the garage.
Can I just make a sketch, it'd be on a napkin? I just want to, I don't get what you're saying.
So, so if we could, here, look, so just so it's easier, Myers Corners is here, we come down our driveway, correct? What I want to do is make this driveway bigger, so this is the existing house, the proposed site, we come down the driveway, turn in, all this will be blacked out. I don't want, I don't want mud on my vehicle, I don't want any of that.
So, excuse me, let me say, and so Bea, the plan that the applicant gave to us is posted online, correct? So his plan and his survey, which shows the structure, is posted on the town website, so you can see from there, and it'd be much better than the sketch on a napkin.
Fine, I get it, just saying.
All right, yeah, no problem.
We're not in a position where we're gonna stay in this house for much longer, so we're just thinking of our future, we're both in our separate, we're thinking of selling soon. We want to make sure that the whole thing, we have trees lining the driveway, we'd like to make sure that it's still for its purpose, and something's not gonna tower over it like a big pole barn. That's all we're worried about.
No, understood, yeah, it's not...
I hope, I hope that it's eye pleasing, I mean, listen, it's eye pleasing to them, it's gotta eye pleased to me, too, right?
Sure.
Especially the building.
And I should be referring to a pole barn, it's not a pole barn.
But is this gonna happen, and how long does it take to finish?
I'm sorry, is he in?
When does it take? When is it gonna start and when is it finished?
All right, he would have to be able to tell you that, I can't.
So we, now that we've put off, again, I was gonna purchase the building. So if I purchased the building and the town board said nay, I would have purchased a 28 by 50 steel building, and I would have bought it, I bought it, there's no digging to buy it. So I put the building on hold, like everything now with COVID, now that I pushed it out, now they're telling me delivery day is coming. So I said, okay, I'll wait to hear from the town board, any objections. I will do the site clearing, do the footing, pour the slab, pour the retaining wall, possibly get the driveway done so that it's ready for blacktop, and hopefully, I'm going to Arqueso eventually in two months. When I come back, everything's put on hold, I can't believe the delivery, it's incredible.
I could tell you, just manufacturing in general, it's kind of a nightmare right now. So, you know, time, lead times to get anything are well extended beyond what they normally would be. But I think, I'm sure Rich, you know, as soon as he gets the building, he's gonna put it up, it's not gonna sit in his backyard for six months. I may be concerned whether it's just sitting in a pile, you know, in his yard.
No, it won't be a pile, you'll see a slab first, footing inspection, just as code, frame footing inspection, retaining wall, driveway, item, so there's gonna be some digging. I'm gonna try to put two pokes out near the end of the driveway, so I was gonna ask you if you want your mailbox, and now I'm tired of that down, I'm tired of the snowplows wanting to down. So I was gonna put two stone pillars with lights, driveway dug up, lights coming under. I'm trying to make it obviously aesthetically better than it is now. So anything that'll droop, it'll be eligible.
Okay. I think we're good. Thank you for your concerns.
Yeah, my only concern, like, and then as far as the driveway that you pull in now?
Yes.
That stay in the same size?
Negative, it's getting bigger. So what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna, I poured a sidewalk. When I poured the sidewalk, I kind of didn't anticipate making the driveway so much bigger, but now I'm gonna cut back the sidewalk so that it's not, it's long to get to the driveway. So I'm actually gonna dig back, saw cut the fresh concrete, come closer to the house, the idea is to be convenient. I'll run 20 feet in the grocer's, so that's what I'm gonna do.
So it's all closer to your side, not ours, because there's, our property is old.
I think, I'm definitely within feet, but if you, listen, if you want to walk it out with me, you want me to move it, no problem.
And I think, too, if you look at his plan that he has online, that he's posted, it kind of details all that stuff, and you'll see exactly what he's gonna do.
You know, my only concern is, and I know it wants to go home, we do have these big trees on the side of the road, I just don't want those trees touched.
Negative, so they have pine trees.
They probably reach their maturity, and they're beautiful, and ready as this with all the trucks being parked, and we lost half of the trees already, never said anything, we understand, it's tight over there.
I got you.
But when you make this driveway, I just don't want those trees taken down.
No, so the trees border, so when you come down my driveway, they have four big pine trees, and listen, they are beautiful, but some parts of that, when they came down, come down on my side. So listen, I understand that they're your trees, I'm not trying to be an ardent...
So you're not coming that way with the driveway?
Negative, but I'm gonna come closer, in order for me to make it wider, I have to do a little bit, but I'm not gonna touch your trees. Negative, if you would like to, tomorrow, when I come home from work, I'll walk you exactly, I'll spray painting, and show you, if you don't like it, I'll move it over.
No, I'm sure it has to be surveyed.
No, no, I'm listening.
Your concerns are valid, but our, you know, we're charged with tonight with...
I'm sure there's a survey, and they know what the topic is, and that's fine.
Our concerns are what are, we're charged with tonight to review what his variance is all about, which is basically his footprint, right? And his distance from the front to Myers Corners Road. The driveway and the trees are really not on our purview, but we understand your concerns.
Right, I just don't want the driveway dug up when all the trees die, because we dug it too close to the trees. These trees have been growing for 20 years.
Gotcha.
They're big and beautiful, and we don't want them destroyed.
Gotcha, understood.
Okay, all right, that's it.
Good.
All right, thank you.
Glad to, I'll have work tomorrow, sorry. I didn't mean to talk over you.
No, that's fine.
Okay.
You're sure, you're very welcome. Sure. I think, I didn't, we, I don't, the board, anybody else on the board have any other questions for, for Rich? I think we covered it, I think we've been to the site, I think we understand how it's going on. All right, can I have a motion then to close the public hearing?
Motion.
Have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So moved. So moved. Okay, then, can I have a motion please to grant or deny the applicant the variance?
Uh, motion to grant?
Uh, you have to do both.
Sorry?
Do both, you might want to do both of them separate or you're going to do them together?
Let's do them both at the same time, right?
Yeah, I think, I think same time. So motion to grant, um, the, both. The adjacency to the street, I, I have always seen as less of an issue just because the house is even closer. Um, it, it creates no major change. Uh, the size is again at that 50% threshold. And it's great that you worked with us to get it kind of closer to that, uh, which I think is, is a good thing. Uh, going down the list. Um, the benefit could be achieved through other means by having a smaller garage. It is not an undesirable change in the neighborhood. I think it fits the look and, uh, style of the house. The request is substantial in, in both cases. Um, there is no adverse physical environmental effect. Um, and the difficulty is self-created. Um, that being said, I, I think we should grant.
I'll second.
Second, can roll call please be?
Mr. Lawrence Zinni?
Yes.
Mr. Delaporte?
Yes.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Mr. Bellary?
Yes. All right, so your variance both have been granted. You're, you're, you're free to go and, and build your garage.
Thank you so much. I want to thank you all for coming out and trying to be understanding, I appreciate you so much.
Sure, no problem. Thank, thank you for working with us.
Just, just on a side note, if you make your driveway wider at Myers Corner, you need a DPW permit.
So, so when I say wider, so because, just so understanding, so the road comes back off Myers. Any kind of black top wall, remove it from that road, would I have contact with that?
You have, so it depends, I don't know how far in. A town road, it's 12, it could be 25 feet.
Okay.
So anything in the DPW right away, you need to, I would call them.
Okay, I will.
Just make sure that they're okay with it or they give you a permit or.
Right, because their cash basis is in front of them.
Yeah, they're going to want to know about it.
No, no problem, I'm glad you did. Does the board, do you want to contact, be want to contact?
No, no, you're going, that, you're on your own.
Oh, okay, I didn't know if that was.
You're all set.
Thank you so much.
Good night, have a good night.
Thank you very much.
Okay, next up on the agenda tonight is appeal number 217726, Janice R. Duskin. Seeking an area variance section 24037 of the district regulations in an R40 slash 80 zoning district. Where 50 feet is required to the rear property line, the applicant can provide 26 feet for the construction of a 10 by 12 deck with composite decking and vinyl railings, wood stairs. Thus requesting a variance of 24 feet. The property is located at 114 Chelsea Road and is identified as tax grid number 605603-398456 in the town of Wappinger. Could I have a motion please to open the public hearing?
Motion.
Have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Uh, so moved. All right, Janice?
Good evening.
Good evening. Step up to the microphone.
Okay.
So we asked the applicants for the benefit of anybody who's listening in plus for the board. We just asked you to give us just a brief description of what you need and why you need it.
Um, well, basically, we, my husband and I, Paul Johnson, we want to build a deck, uh, or replace a deck. When we bought the house in 1997, the deck was there.
Um, during the years, things, we had storms and everything fell apart.
So we want to replace that deck, which is also attached to a patio. And it's behind our house on Chelsea Road. And it's a 10 by 12 deck that we want to, you know, add to the property.
Okay, we were, we were all out to, to the site on Saturday, took a, a look, a good look around. See, pretty straightforward, just going to grab the plane here on, on what you need and what you're doing.
Yes.
You know, something's a little, the, the property is a little bit unique in that, you know, your, your front yard's really not your front yard. It's kind of your.
Right. It's turned in a different direction.
So, so, you know, the, the, the set, but, but the setback is required. Um, we did notice too that, you know, uh, the deck is going to be in line with the home. So it's really not going to be any closer to the property line than the home is.
No.
Um, I, I think, you know, pretty straightforward. I, if you guys have any other questions, you know, we were out to the site, you showed us exactly what you're doing, where you're doing it. Pretty, again, I, I don't have any additional questions, you know, for the applicant as far as the, the deck is concerned. Are you guys?
No.
No, I think.
Probably.
Yeah.
And it's definitely a safety issue because if, you know, we have this patio, but there's no deck or steps to get down.
Certainly have a safety issue now.
God forbid if we have a fire.
That, that first step is a big one, right?
Right.
So, uh, did anybody in the public have any questions, concerns regarding this application? Okay, nobody in the public, then can I then have a motion please to close the public hearing?
Motion.
Have a second?
Second.
All in favor? So moved. Okay, can I have a motion then please to grant or deny the applicant the variance?
I'll make a motion that we grant the variance. Uh, this requested variance will not produce an undesirable change in the neighborhood. Uh, there is no substantial detriment that will be created to nearby properties. Uh, there is no other feasible means available to pursue, pursue the benefit that you are requesting. Requested variance is substantial, but due to the unique and special property, it's not prohibited. The proposed variance will not have an adverse effect on the physical and environmental conditions in the neighborhood. And the alleged difficulty is self-created, again, not prohibited. So I'll make a motion that we grant the variance.
Okay, you have a second please.
Second.
All right, roll call be?
Mr. Lawrence?
Yes.
Mr. Lawrence Zinni?
Yes.
Mr. Delaporte?
Yes.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Mr. Bellary?
Yes. Okay, your variance has been granted.
Thank you.
And you're free to go.
All right, thank you everyone.
You're very welcome. All right, next on the.
Just for the public, some people have left. Tomorrow, Bea and I will approve your variance now that it's been granted and it'll be given to the building department. We're a little behind, but you'll get a call from our building inspector as soon as it's ready to be picked up.
You're welcome. Okay, next on the agenda tonight is appeal number 217728, Edie Nunez. Seeking an area variance section 24037 of the district regulations in an R40 zoning district. Where 50 feet is required to the rear property line, the applicant can provide 20 feet for the installation of an 18 by 33 above ground pool, thus requesting a variance of 30 feet. The property is located at 17 Pealane and is identified as tax grid number 625804-906150 in the town of Wappinger. Could I have a motion please to open the public hearing?
I'll make that motion.
Have a second?
Secondary.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, so moved. Edie? Please step up to the microphone. So just for everyone that's listening in, the board and anybody in the audience or at home, just a, a brief description of what you need and why you need it.
Well, so I would like to install an above ground pool, 18 by 33, and behind my house right next to the deck. So I don't know if you guys took a visit, right, everyone? Um, so it's very narrow in the back. So whether I put it very close to the deck or to the side, I think I will still need to apply for a variance.
Gotcha. Gotcha, now we were all, after you hit your home on Saturday, to the, to the look in the backyard, see what's going on. You see you have some, some limitations back there on exactly where you could put the pool. You know, and where it can be placed in, in the yard. Also took a good look around, it seems like, you know, your, your neighbors to the rear were, were pretty far back, you know, from your property line as well. And you do have some screening in between, you know, your rear, your rear, your property line and, and the homes behind you. Um, you know, in, in walking around the property, it does, where you propose to put the pool, does seem like the best place for it, you know, it'd be the most secluded instead of, you know, if you moved it to the right a little bit, it'd be more out to the driveway, more visible from the road, that kind of thing. So we, I think that the placement is correct. Uh, you had everything ready for us when we got there, I, you know, to take a look to see where the, you know, where the pool's going to be. Uh, so I, I, you know, we had our discussion in the yard. I don't have any further questions or, or concerns unless you guys do.
No, I, I think it's, it's.
Yeah. Yeah, I, I think you're, you're putting in the best place it can be. Uh, if there's no, no more further questions from the board, I'll ask the audience, anybody in the audience here to speak for or against the variance? Nobody, nobody here, so nobody in the public, nobody on the board has any more questions? So then I'd say I will ask then for a motion to close the public hearing, please?
I'll make that motion.
Have a second?
Secondary.
All in favor?
Aye.
So moved. Okay, could I have then a, uh, a vote to either deny or grant the applicant the variance?
I'll make the motion to grant the variance. Um, the requested variance will not produce an undesirable change in the neighborhood. Uh, there's no substantial detriment will be created to nearby properties. There's really no other feasible method of where to put the pool because of the way the property is situated. Where the requested variance is substantial, it's just a matter of the way the property is laid out. Um, the proposed variance will not have an adverse effect or impact on the physical environmental conditions in neighborhood or district. And the alleged difficulty is self-created, but like I said, there's not much more you can do with that property the way it's laid out. So that's my motion to grant.
Can I have a second please?
Secondary.
All in favor? Have a roll call please, Bea.
Mr. Lawrence?
Yes.
Mr. Lawrence Zinni?
Yes.
Mr. Delaporte?
Yes.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Mr. Bellary?
Yes. Okay, so your variance has been granted. And you can go and build your pool now.
Thank you so much, we appreciate it.
You're very welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, last but not least on the agenda tonight. Appeal number 217725, Sean Witikowski. Seeking an area variance section 24037 of district regulations in an R20 zoning district. Where 40 feet to the rear yard property line is required, the applicant can provide 25 feet for the installation of a 16 by 36 in-ground pool, excuse me, thus requesting a variance of 15 feet. Where 20 feet to the side yard property line is required, the applicant can provide 10 feet for the installation of a 16 by 36 in-ground pool, thus requesting a variance of 10 feet. Where 75 feet to the front property line from a county road is required, the applicant can provide 68.3 feet for the construction of a new garage, thus requesting a variance of 67 feet. Where 35 feet to the front property line from a town road is required, the applicant can provide 24 feet for the construction of a new garage, thus requesting a variance of 11 feet. Where 10 feet to the rear yard property line is required, the applicant can provide 8 feet for the construction of a 10 foot by 14 foot cabana, thus requesting a variance of 2 feet. Where lot coverage shall not exceed 15%, the applicant is proposing to cover 2876.16 square feet, thus requesting a variance of 512.96 square feet for a new garage, pool and cabana. Note, 50% coverage of this lot is 2363.2 square feet. The property is located at 128 Chelsea Road and is identified as tax grid number 605603-454462 in the town of Wappinger. Could I have a motion please to open the public hearing?
Motion.
Have a second?
Second.
All in favor? So moved. Hello? All right, how are you, Sean? So by now you know the routine, right?
Yeah.
So for, for anybody that might be listening in, the board and benefit, just a, a quick, a good description of what you need and why you need it. We got, you got a lot going on here.
Yeah, we have a little bit going on. Um, so looking for the new pool in for wife and kids to be able to hang out in summertime. Not have to worry about really going much, kind of hanging out at home. Um, and then the garage is, uh, the garage that we have now is kind of hurting a little bit. So we're talking about upgrading it and then adding a second floor so that my parents can have an apartment to stay. They're getting close to retirement and, uh, you know, we got the grandkids up here, they're trying to live down in Florida also, so.
Gotcha.
It's a place for them to come back to. Um, still a little piece of home still in New York.
Yeah, if I remember correctly, we were all out to site, you know, a couple of weeks ago. You know, took a good look at what you got going on and you're, you're, you're pretty, you're, you're, you're packaged it in there on a, on a, on a small parcel. And it definitely, definitely got a lot going on in the yard. Now, if I remember correctly, the, the garage addition is not getting any closer to booth, right? It's in parallel with the existing structure.
Correct.
Right, and going back toward the house.
Correct.
And it's being, it's connected to the house as well.
It will be connected to the house, yes. There will be a heated reesway between the house and the garage mudroom area.
Right, gotcha.
It will be all one.
That being said, Barbara, we still need the variance for that.
Yeah, actually, if he kept it detached, he wouldn't be able to put the apartment in it.
Gotcha.
The law changed back that an apartment has to be in the home. So by attaching it, it becomes part of the home.
Gotcha.
And garage is the right terminology, but like, if we approve the garage adjacency, even if it's an apartment and it's part of the home, like, should we say it's a, should we call it?
Well, you could do it a garage and living space because I've been very clear with the applicant that at some point, if his parents decide not to use the apartment anymore or he goes to sell it, the kitchen at least has to be removed and they can use it as a great room or anything they want to call it, but it would no longer be an apartment, it would just be part of the home.
Okay.
Yep.
So when we approve the variance, we should use the terminology that's here, we should call it a garage?
A garage with living space above. This way it's clear for the record, it's not an apartment forevermore, but living space.
Right, gotcha, follow you. I think also I had mentioned that in sometime, not that it really has any bearing tonight, but there's something about you, we're going to purchase the parcel behind you, are looking to do that?
So, um, Nicole, who actually owns the property, did reach out to me the other day and ask if I, you know, she should either show up or write a letter and, you know, much like the comment that we made, we're not going to be able to proceed with that until November timeframe. Um, due to her bank, when she just did a refi, the bank wants a year of her paying up first, um, holding the property before they'll allow the realignment to happen.
Right, I got you, gotcha.
But we do have, you know, lots of emails back and forth, she's completely on board with doing this, uh, along with our, my neighbor Mary that's in between us, um, to, to kind of help us all out and add some property space to us.
Gotcha.
Because, yeah, we are, we are taking a little bit of space from our backyard.
Right, but the timing wise, you know, this, this is all coming before that.
Yes, I was having an enforcement.
Yeah, right.
Can be approved based on the condition that we're having extra property? Because it's building more than likely 18%, which is a lot. So I have some concerns with that. As is, I know your plan is to buy it, but we don't know if it's going to happen or not.
Yeah.
Right?
I, I, I'm right there with you, I guess. I mean, anything can happen between now and November.
Right, yes.
So I, I understand a hundred percent.
Yeah, that really.
So you can't make that a condition, Shalise, because if it doesn't happen, he'll already have built the new garage and the pool.
Yeah, and that's really, doesn't, though it's good to know, it really should not influence our decision tonight, uh, either way. Um, yeah, again, you know, we were out there, we saw everything going on, he did a nice job marketing out and explaining it all to us. Um, again, it's a pretty tight piece of property, you got, you got a lot here squeezing into that tight space. Uh, I, I don't have any other questions for the applicant or if, if you guys do.
Uh, I would like to say for, for the record, that my, Sean is my neighbor.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and what he has stated about the swimming pool being there in the past is correct. And prior to him purchasing the house, it was filled in, so there was a swimming pool there.
Right, that's right, I forgot about that. You let us know that at some point in time there was a swimming pool there.
Yeah.
It got filled in.
Right.
Your, your swimming pool is kind of going in that same spot.
Exactly.
Gotcha.
So swimming, okay, swimming pool and garage was already there before?
The, the swim, the, this, where he's putting the proposed swimming pool.
Right, yeah.
Where he's putting that, there was at one time a swimming pool there, but it got filled in.
At the same time, my concern is having more than 15% area building up. So question is, when there was swimming pool, is the same garage was there too?
That's correct, there was a swimming pool and a garage.
Yeah, oh, I see, okay.
And the garage is shifting, is it also getting a little bit smaller or is it just shifting?
It's, the front is going to actually extend out, I think, another 11 feet. I don't remember exactly, it's 10 or 11 feet towards Chelsea Road. And then we're cutting off 5 feet off the back.
Okay, it's a little bit bigger.
Yeah, 6 feet, 5, 6 feet.
Netting out, about 5, 6 feet.
What's that?
You're netting out about 5, 6 feet.
Yeah, yeah, because we're cutting off the backside so that we can, don't have to worry about the variance from the rear.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so we'll be right at that 40 foot mark and then adding to the front to be able to create a reesway to make everything look, you know, attached to the house.
Gotcha.
You know, as it, as, so it looks all nice and pretty.
I, I mean, I guess my opinion, it's a lot of variances, but I think it actually is pretty well planned. You know, like seeing the site and where you're positioning things, I think it actually makes a lot of sense and, and lays out in a nice way. And like, just looking through the list, I can't see where you could shrink one or shift one to make a better condition than what you're proposing.
Yeah, no, yeah, the site plan you put together is pretty tight. Like, like David said, very well put together and followed out.
Thank you.
Um, again, any, any other questions from the board? Any questions from the audience? All right, so is there no other questions from the board or the audience? Can I then please have a motion to close the public hearing?
I'll make that motion.
Have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So moved, okay, then. Can I have a motion please to deny or grant the applicant the variances? Uh, actually, six of them, right? You got six variances on the docket. So we're going to need to, Barbara, you need to address these in one group or one at a time?
Because of the, they're sub, they're very substantial, it would probably be better if they were read individually.
Individually, yeah, would, do we need to go through the, the conditions on each one as well?
No.
Okay, all right.
I, I would, I'm sorry, I would do a motion to grant or deny each one and then whoever's making that should then go through the five steps.
Okay.
For the record.
I follow you, all right. So then we're going to need a motion then to grant or deny, uh, let's say, let's say variance number one. So I will make a motion then to grant the applicant the variance number one. I'll make a motion to grant the applicant the variance number two. Or should I, should I read them all again? Okay, so we'll back up a step, okay? So I'll make a motion to grant the applicant variance number one. Where 40 feet to the rear yard property line is required, the applicant can provide 25 feet for the installation of a 16 by 36 in-ground pool, thus requesting a variance of 15 feet. And I will then also make a motion to grant the applicant variance number two. Where 20 feet to the side yard property line is required, the applicant can provide 10 feet[1698.52]